All right, we're live. Welcome, everybody, to our Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and we are joined this week again by our founder, Greg.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming. Glad you're here. We've got an exciting lineup again today, so we're happy that you're on, so welcome.
Yeah, we're super excited to have you here today, as we are every week. As you're coming on, go ahead and come over in the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Confirm that, actually, it would be really fun today, as you guys come in. Tell us what the temperature is where you are.
There you go, perfect.
And we will see, we'll see who has the coldest. Just to be fair, I think the, I think I know. Although it is here in New York City, it's 11 degrees. That's better than the seven it was this morning.
Not bad.
All right. Hello, Amelia in Orlando, Waynesville, North Carolina. Negative three degrees. Oh, my goodness, y'all, I haven't even walked the dog today. He is, he's not happy with me. All right. Negative 14, wow. Fabulous. Well, I'm so glad you guys are all here. I hope you're bundled up and warm. You know, grab your shot of Ning Shoret or your cup of tea. This is currently thawing my frozen fingers in my Brooklyn apartment. And today, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about the nucleus of your business. We're going to talk about the center, the beating heart of your business and your Get Oiling system, and that's your contact manager. I'm actually going to come over here and I'm going to screen share real quick, just to kind of give you guys a rundown of what we are going to. Whoa, that's a little premature, isn't it? There we go. All right. We're going to talk a little bit about what we'll cover today. Definitely do keep those comments coming in the chat. We want to hear from you. You know, definitely put your questions, if you have questions, specific that you'd like to have addressed with us today, especially if they pertain to your list or your contact manager or any related feature. Put that in the Q and A box, so we can get to you. All right, so I'm calling this the list, because what you'll hear colloquially, if I could get that word out, in this space is, is your list is an incredibly valuable asset for your business. That list is your list of contacts. Whether you got started in network marketing and with Young Living with a list of 100 names and numbers on a piece of paper, or your list inside your phone, or wherever that list of contacts may live, that is your network. It is your, and they say your network is your net worth. And of course, how you build and maintain this list of contacts has a very crucial impact on the future of your business. So we're going to talk about this in depth today and treat it as the very important topic that it is. So welcome, we're excited to have you. And today, we're going to cover our contact manager inside of Get Oiling. This is the nucleus, this is the center of your business. And we're going to talk about some tweaks and hacks that you can use to save time and get more done using the system. We're also going to show you how you can effortlessly stay on top of things, making sure that you never drop the ball with a prospect. Maybe you meet somebody and they're like, oh, yeah, I'd super love to come to a class sometime. And then maybe they miss one, and then you totally lose touch because you didn't stay on top of them. Because obviously, in our busy lives, we don't have the capacity always to be on top of everything all the time. As a matter of fact, we're more stretched than ever in our hyperconnected world. And it's really important for you to build in support systems that'll help you to maintain that peace of mind and make sure that you're actually getting the things done that you need to get done. So we're going to show you how you can support that critical function of your life today as well with a very simple and easy to use Get Oiling feature that you may not be using right now. And then you're also going to learn how you can create systems inside of Get Oiling to help you grow. All right. So I'm going to unshare, because this actually is not going to be a very slide-heavy situation today. Stop share. All right, fabulous. And we're actually going to do a lot of screen sharing and show you guys what we're talking about. And the very first thing that we're going to do is show you what to do with your contacts when you first start with your Get Oiling system. So if you already have members who are with you in Young Living, you can actually import them directly into Get Oiling. And there's a couple of really cool things that our system does when you do that. So I think that that's probably the first and best thing that we could share. Let me see. Is that something that you're able to pull up, Greg?
Sure, yeah, let me do that here.
All right, really cool to see all you guys here.
Cool, okay, all right, I think you see the screen, okay?
Yes.
Awesome, okay. So importing, that's under contact settings. And there's a big button at the top for import. I won't actually go into the Young Living Virtual Office, but there's steps here. It's basically a direct link, so you can log in over there if you're not already. Walk through these steps, you click on your My Organization. There's an advanced link, Download a Report. Make sure you check these fields here, because they're essential to creating like the tree viewer inside of Get Oiling. You want to leave all the other fields that are selected selected and just add these to them. And then click Download, you'll get a file. And then you choose that file and put it in the box here. So I think I should have a random file that I could do here. They're usually, it's usually called something like All Accounts, that sort of thing. So it's, the file should be along those lines. I'll just pick one of these sort of at random here. Maybe this one. Sorry if this is somebody that you know. I'll hit Start. So on the next screen, you'll end up with, it's basically going to be a list of people that are in the file. This one only happens to have two in here. Now, if you import from Young Living, it does automatically recognize the fields at the top. But if you're importing some other, from some other format, you'll want to make sure, just do a quick scan and verify, like this is a list. Make sure that the field names match up with what you see down there, just in case there's something that changes. But then, down here, you can, you can go ahead and either hit Start Import, or if you want to tag on them too, and I'm sure Ashley could probably talk to this a little bit more, if you wanted to tag them, to organize them somehow, you certainly could. And a lot of times, like, so this is an example file from Young Living. For some reason, oftentimes, the member number or the member names come in all caps. So that's what this nice little box does. When you import them, it will convert them into names that are normal, so that you don't, when you send a bulk email, it doesn't personalize them with their name in all caps. It looks like you're screaming.
I'm not yelling at you.
Exactly, yep. And then you just hit Start Import, which I won't do here, since we've got a few in our contact manager. But then it will load them over here right into your contact manager.
And so our system, when you do that, will automatically tag them with, say, Essential Rewards, right, or Product/Customer.
Yep, like this Essential Rewards tag shows up automatically, based on the data that comes from Young Living. And you can automatically, or sorry, you can manually add that if you want to. Like if I were to go in here, you can edit the contact and there's a box that says, yeah, they're on Essential Rewards. Down here, you could say yes, and then that turns on that little badge too. But it does automatically do that, so you don't have to go in there. But if you want to do it. I was just saying, but you're super excited, you just get off the phone and you want to go in your contact manager and turn them on, DR, you certainly could do that, so.
Yeah, yeah, so if you just got somebody signed up, by all means, yeah, do that. Because it feels like a little win, clicking that. Yes, I got that. So the other thing that our system will automatically do when you import from Young Living is it'll actually import your organizational structure. Right, so if you have a team already and you want to be able to strategically contact them. So if you wanted to contact a specific leg of your business or exclude a certain part of your business. Obviously, what you're seeing here, this is a test account. We don't want to share, don't want to share anybody's sensitive information here. But what you can do, if you've already done this, by, you know, going to Young Living and importing, just like Greg showed you, go over and click this tree viewer. And you can actually see, and you can reach out to those individual contacts who are now in your system.
Yeah, so there's a couple neat things with this. As you can see, it is a tree viewer. It's very much like the Young Living Back Office. You can expand and collapse, but there are ways to contact people on specific legs. So if you want to mail everyone in this leg, you could do that with the Actions button. And then click Mail under Selected Contacts. Mail the downline of each selected contact. That's what makes it mail down the leg. And then type your message and send it off. So it's really good if you've got a bigger organization that maybe is being actively managed by, you know, a couple of legs are doing really well, but there's a couple of legs that aren't maybe, and you want to be the one managing them. So that's, that's super useful for that. Belle asks here, if you were to import a second time, would it overwrite? And it's got, or add, is the question. Would it overwrite or add? And the answer is, it's a combination of both, actually. If the contact already exists, which it looks it up by member number, the Young Living member number and/or email address, depending on what happens to be in the file, it will just update their information in place. So if they update their email address in Young Living, it'll update then, that ultimately will show up here too. So you'll have your information up to date. If they change their name, that will also come back here too. So if you do change their name in the contact manager and import again from Young Living, it will update their name. New members will be added, though. So in other words, the most common question I get is, will it duplicate? You know, if you import twice, you're going to end up with everybody's name twice. The answer is no. It'll deduplicate to the best that it can. So, and I don't think you can change member numbers, so I think it should be good there.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, you can go in, I guess periodically, if you wanted to, maybe once a year or twice a year, and import over from the system, just to account for changes, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could do that, any, you know, there's some people. Right, there's a lot of people who will do it weekly or monthly. It kind of depends on how fast your organization is growing and how you want to keep, how many, you know, keep them in the loop sooner than later. So, and there'll be a lot of people who want to then add them to a new prospects, or, and sorry, a new members campaign, which you can do. That's kind of a neat little tip. Under Filters, you can actually sort your contact list by, where is that at? Contact Creation Date, newest to oldest. So then all the new people you just imported show up at the top of your list. And you can go there and check them and add a contact. So anyway, neat little tip, off in the weeds a little bit, but thought I'd share that.
We're actually going to go a little further into that today, though. So don't worry if you're curious about how to do that. We definitely want to cover some of that today. First, I wanted to talk about a little bit of personalization and some tweaks and hacks that can actually help you to get more out of this and to further personalize the system for yourself. So I wanted to start actually just with a simple email signature. If you guys have been here for previous trainings, if you attended or watched the recording for the funnel training, you understand that there are opportunities that you have to, you know, to expose people to this offer that you've created, to have them opt into it. And one of the things that I suggested is to put that link inside of your email signature, so that anytime you email someone, you can say, you know, get my five, my favorite tips for healthier living, right? And then there's a clickable link in every email that you send out, so people can go and opt into that. And receive what you're promoting.
Sorry, I'm going to hop in here. So yeah, contact settings and under General Settings is where your signature is at that point. You can put that in here and put in those links and whatever else that you want to put in there. So this guy, this demo account, his name is John Larson. So we'll put that in there and his phone number. And then, well, we can add a link later, but let's just say it's mylink.com, whatever. And Save. So what will happen then is when you go over to your contact manager, the next time that you are sending an email, let me deselect all contacts here. I'll just say I'm going to mail everyone. You notice the email signature shows up, then you can just go in there and type your message and add to it.
Awesome. Oh, wow, Becky says that one tip was worth today's call for me. Was just working on this yesterday, but individually. So probably on the tip that you gave just a minute ago. Awesome, Becky, really glad that you're getting that value out of it. Yeah, so you guys, if you haven't done this yet, by all means, put your website link. And if you don't have a pretty link for it, if you don't have a custom domain for it, then all you got to do, if you, well, I mean, email info@getoiling.com and we'll help you set that up. But there is, Greg, if you could hover over that link right there, or at least, yeah, there we go. So you highlight and then you hit your little insert link thing right there. And then this is where you would put your, the link to your landing page of your funnel or to the front page of your Get Oiling website. Or any place you'd like for them to go. But obviously, you want them to, you know, to come to a place where they can get more information and get closer to making a decision, right? So there you go.
Absolutely.
Sweet. All right, cool. So let's see, you know, tags are a really important feature. And we should definitely let people know in terms of, you know, how they use their, so to be able to tweak your system and sort of hack your system to make it as ideal for you as possible. Understand that tags are one of the easiest things that you can input and apply to your contacts that can help you to identify very quickly who to send what to. And you can, you can tag people according to whatever name that you choose. So if, you know, if you want people who are in a particular market, like a local market, that you want to send a quick email to to remind about an upcoming in-person event, or if there is a mom's group on Facebook and people are opting in from there, or, you know, obviously giving you their information from there. You can, literally what Greg is doing right here, he's showing you can do one for an individual, right? So if we wanted to, on my contact here, we could say mom's group or something. And then that's going to be a tag that becomes applicable to other contacts. So after we save this, and we go back to our contact manager, so now you can see that that's on my contact. We could actually select other people and add that tag to them. And what Greg's doing right now is going to show you how to do that. You actually, you go down to the Selected Contacts and hit Add Campaign Follow-up Planner Tags. And then you add your tag.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, you can, you can take the downline here too. So this is related to that earlier Leg Builder feature. You can, if you check that box, it'll actually traverse on down anyone that you have selected and add that tag too. So some people like to have their specific legs tagged. That way, at a glance, they know who they're in or which leg that they're in. So there, yeah, so now.
Melissa just asked, can you copy and paste your signature from Google emails?
Yeah, I would think you could. I mean, the signature basically takes anything that you want to put in there. You could put in images, texts, probably not a video.
You could actually, you could actually do a lot more with this than you would be able to with Google, for sure. I don't think Google has like the HTML capacity, right? Not to the same degree that we do.
Yeah, I'm not sure. But yeah, there's certainly a lot of flexibility here.
Awesome.
For what you can put in there.
Good question. All right, so we've got, y'all love your tags. It really does help to keep you organized. So do make sure that you use them. Obviously, when you're creating landing pages or you're importing contacts from a specific place, you can apply those tags at that point. But if you, during a specific period of time, maybe you're doing a business blitz. And we're going to call it, you know, the January Blitz, where you are making a concerted effort to reach out to, you know, and invite five people a day to view a presentation. When you bring, when you add those people into your contact manager, you could write down the January Blitz. Right, and so that's something that gives you reference. It's another reference point for you to remember when that person came in and what the context was. Just whatever helps you to best, you know, relate that together. So that it makes sense for you and is easy to use. It's customizable in that way. Now, related to that, actually, I was going to do follow-up plans later, but let's go ahead and do that now. Okay, so this is, this is a feature, you guys, that a lot of you might not be using. Actually, quick show of hands. If you use the Follow-up Plans feature, raise your hand. Let us know in the comments what you use it for. Wow, that's not very many people, you guys. You're going to learn something really valuable today. All right, cool, yeah, if you care to share. Haven't gotten that far yet, no worries. Definitely will give it a try after this, after our call today. Following up with team members so far, I don't have a lot of prospects yet, but over 2,000 team members, fantastic. So what we'll talk about as well here shortly, Jackie, is how you can, this isn't just about getting new members, right? Obviously, you need to be focused all the time on getting new members. But, but there are ways that you can maximize what you already have by strategic communication, which again, comes back to the heart of this contact manager. And so when you have those tags there, are they tagged with Essential Rewards? Then maybe you need to create a campaign that educates people on Essential Rewards. And then you can plug the people who are already members of your organization that aren't on Essential Rewards, because they don't have the tag, and start sending them that information that helps to get more of them onto ER. So you have 2,000 people and a small percentage of them is on ER. Then here's the way for you to get more of them on. Awesome. All right, so, so yeah, this, this feature, the, excuse me.
Our Follow-up Plans?
Yeah, the Follow-up Plans. This is your planner. This is your internal to-do list. This is where you can, and this isn't something, it's not like a campaign where you have to write a whole bunch of emails and stuff. You're literally just kind of creating a to-do list related to a particular process. Are you able to pull that page up, Greg?
Yep, definitely. So under Setting, this is how you create one, under Settings and Follow-up Plans here. They're basically prepackaged to-do lists, like Ashley was saying. So I'll go ahead and create one here. And I'll just call it my Follow-up Plan. And then it takes me over to a page where I can put in as many tasks as I want to. But what this, what this will do, like, say I have five tasks and I specify them like Day 1, Day 3, Day 7, Day 12, whatever. And you can go to a contact and say, I want to add this follow-up plan. And then it will add that relative to the days that you choose. So like, if you put in five tasks, it'll show up. Those five tasks will then be added to the list, kind of in a bundle. Typically, I see people using this for cases when they, they have the same routine that they want to follow for, let's say, every new member, you want to have three reach-out points to them or something. You know, personally enrolled new members, you want to reach out to them three times in the first month or whatever, whatever your routine is. You could put that in here. And then when you get that new member, you go in there and you add the follow-up plan, which you can do in bulk too. And then it will just, you know, the system will remind you. So I'll go ahead and create this one. I'll just, I'll be super creative and say Task 1, Task 2, and Task 3. And then Task 3. So any, like I said, you can also change the days. So if I want to go to like, you know, I'll put in like a Day 8, Day, I'm having apparently too fast for it right now. But anyway, okay, so my internet's been a little wonky today. So I'll just do this, I'll have my 1, 2, and 3. We have the follow-up plan now. And I will go over here and Ashley, you're the, you're the recipient of this follow-up plan. So for to-dos, so follow-up plans turn into to-do items, if that makes sense. I'll show you that quickly here. So like, if you click Add, a to-do item, this is how you add a follow-up plan too. But I'll just add a task, I'll just say like, Reach Out to Ashley. And they'll say, that's due today, because it's the end of the month and I want to hit my number. So I'll go ahead and add that, it shows up here. And just to show you, I'll come back here, but it also shows up on your dashboard. So like now, I added that to my to-do list and that shows up on the dashboard for her as well. So I'll go back to our contact record here. There's her task. Now, if I want to go ahead and add the follow-up plan, this will add those several, those three tasks there. So like, let me go ahead and add this follow-up plan. And you'll see what it does here. The Day 1 was tomorrow, Day 2 was two days from now and three days from now. So as you would, you know, adjust those numbers, those would put those tasks out. So if you want to do like, you know, seven days out, 14 days out, 30 days out, something like that, you can do that. But it saves you a ton of typing, especially for there's so much routine that a person does. You know, just having those packaged to-do lists are really nice. They save a bunch of time.
And it keeps you on top of things, right? So let's just say, just for context, if you wanted to create a follow-up plan for a new member, obviously, there are campaigns that you can use to automatically drip emails and educate maybe on the elements of their Premium Starter Kit, right? But if somebody is interested in actually growing a business, then you want to invest some time in sitting down and helping them understand what their expectations are, where their resources are, and how to get started. You could use campaigns for that, and I definitely recommend that. But there's a personal touch that's required there as well. So instead of losing track of and maybe not following up with someone after two weeks or something to that effect, then you have that there already. And so you can create that to-do from right there inside of their contacts, like what Greg just showed. Or you can already have a plan in place that you apply to anyone who comes in in a particular circumstance. If you are prospecting and you've invited someone to a live event, you can have a follow-up sequence that you follow, a follow-up plan that you follow with people who maybe you met at a trade show, right? Or who came to a presentation or who you've connected with on Facebook. That way, you know you're following the same systems with each person and you don't lose track of that. And if you're using the Coach, the Digital Upline Coach, which we don't have plugged in on this demo account right now, we don't have it set up. But you can also just have basically preloaded in your to-do list things that are exactly in keeping with the actions that you want to be performing that are moving your progress bar right along toward completion of your activity goal for the week, which is really important as well, to be able to track it. There was one other thing regarding that. Let me see, I've got some notes over here. Oh, we've got a couple of questions that have come in as well.
Yeah, I can answer those. And one other quick thing, you can add multiple follow-up plans. So like, if you want to select three people, Actions, Add Campaign Follow-up Planner Tags, and then you can add your follow-up plan, it'll add them to all at the same time. So one little tip there. Getting to questions here, let's see. Yeah, you can reuse that plan over and over. So once you've created it, you can apply it to as many contacts as you want to, either now or in the future over time. So it's, you know, like a new members follow-up plan will be a fantastic idea. And what it's, you know, like Ashley mentioned, it's really designed to use, to be used with campaigns too. So like, the follow-up plan is for tasks that you want to do personally, like it's going to be a phone call, or maybe you write them a handwritten note to say thank you, or whatever the case might be. The campaigns are more for the auto-follow up with emails. Question, so Becky asks, can one of the follow-up tasks be a reminder to me only to mail something to them, or is this email only to them? The follow-up plans and the to-do items are actually just for your purpose. The contact doesn't ever see them. You'll get a daily email too, that has, like, if I go back to my dashboard now, you'll get a daily email from Get Oiling, assuming you have it turned on. You can shut it off, but most people have it on. It'll have all your to-do items for the day right in that email. So every morning and the wee hours, it'll send you an email with all your lists, list of tasks for the day, which is a great way to get organized. And you can click through on the email and then it'll take you to the dashboard where you can check them off, because I've already reached out to Ashley. I'm doing it right now, so I'll check the box. And then it goes away.
And when you actually, can we go back to the Settings page to the to-do lists or the follow-up plans? This is so cool. Let me see, oh, I was in another demo account that we're not using right now. There was a sample follow-up plan that you had created in one of these about basically to-do lists around an event, right? So booking, booking the venue, sending out the invitations, you know, on this day, on that day, and so on. And if you actually, will you click on one of these, Greg? Any of them is, are fine. Again, in keeping with your coaching activities, I believe when you, when you plug in, if you scroll down a little bit, right? Did I see that on the other? We don't have the coach enabled on this one, that's why.
Right.
Okay, if you have your coach enabled, you actually can, can see the option here. It'll ask you, is this a coaching task? You can actually automatically factor into your Digital Upline Coach.
How about we turn this thing on here?
Yeah, let's do it. Yeah, let's do it.
We'll set it to five hours here, and yeah, we've got a Business Builder. And then we'll do the unicorn, our running favorite coach, so Coachini. But yeah, now if I go back into the task manager or the to-do manager, go back over here, I'll have probably, oh yeah. So here, like, now I can come up here, and here's this coaching activity box that Ashley was just talking about.
Right, so it could be that this one is inviting someone to view a presentation, right? So you're reminding to call them, you're reminding yourself to call or text them so that they know to come to your event or to attend your online class. And so when you do that, it's going to give you those five points when you check that off, and it's already ready for you. So I know that those of you who use the coach, a lot of people have asked, you know, "How do I customize this?" This is how you do it. You create those follow-up plans, because you should have systems in place for every function of your business. Have a system around the way that you share Young Living with people. So that means that you invite, and then, you know, the next day, you have a quick follow-up to review the information. And then you set another reminder or to-do manually for a date in the future. If they're not ready to get started yet, but they want to check back in the spring. You go and you put that in your to-do, and you snap a date on it, and then it's going to pop up for you as something that you need to get done. And that way, you never lose track of a prospect. There's so many people who have said, "Not right now," who could become a yes for you. There are so many people who are maybe even in your organization as members or who have, you know, purchased in a one-off situation, who don't understand the benefits of essential rewards yet, and you can have opportunities to educate them. But you need to be able to remind yourself who those people are and what education they need. And so this helps you internally to design the functions of your business so that you've basically got an assistant telling you what needs to be done every day. All right, we got a couple of questions here. Cynthia asked, "Are these trainings sequential?" Is this the third one? Yes, this is the third one, but they are not necessarily sequential. The, really, the idea behind these weekly sessions is to address really the core principles of our system and how we can help you. And then, in as many cases as possible, you know, bring you guys out and work with you directly where that's applicable. Melissa asked about the CSV download. Is it from Young Living's virtual office, or do we access it via somewhere else? If you're downloading your contacts or your member base, that is going to come from the virtual office of GetOiling. I'm sorry, of Young Living. You're going to put that into GetOiling. And then, of course, if you're downloading contacts from anywhere else, you know, say from your Gmail or from your phone, or however you might export, so long as it's a CSV file, you can import, you know, if you used another system, you could import from there and so on. When a prospect gets an email but decides, "I want nothing to do with this," and they unsubscribe, does the system automatically remove them and I get a message, or do I get a message and do it manually?
If they click the unsubscribe link, it will unsubscribe them automatically. You'll get a message on it saying so-and-so unsubscribed. If they, you know, they could, for example, one thing I see people do on like our own list is they'll just click the reply button and say, "Please unsubscribe me from your list." Now, that's where you got to go in and do it manually. But if they click the link on the bottom, it'll take care of it for you. The same is actually true of texting too. So if you use the texting feature and someone replies, "Stop," it will just automatically opt them out, so you don't have to worry about that. And you can always see that too, like I can show you here in the contact manager. If someone asks you how, or like, "Please remove me from your list," you can come in here and edit the contact, and there's an opt-in field here where you can say, "Opt-in of email," or "In or out of email or text." So if someone says, "Please don't send me any text messages," it's fine if you send me an email. Uncheck the text box, leave email there, and then save it, and then they won't get any future bulk texts from you. So that's kind of a nice little tip.
An important thing to remember though, because, you know, with our system, you have a contact manager, which is a traditional concept that existed before email marketing, automated email marketing was a thing. And we fulfill both functions with GetOiling. So you have a way to manage all of your contacts, and then also to opt them in or have them opt in or out of email marketing. When someone opts out of a newsletter, that doesn't remove them from your system. They're still a contact of yours. They've just removed permission for you to send them automatic emails. You could reach out to them individually for other purposes if you have that relationship with them, but it doesn't remove them from your system entirely. It's an important thing to remember, because sometimes people just, they get tired of their email inbox, and it's nothing personal. But they just, you know, they don't want any more marketing emails from anybody, period. But that doesn't necessarily mean they don't want to hear from you personally ever. And so you can still keep your own personal, you know, follow-up plans, you know. Obviously, if this is someone that you have a personal relationship with, they were a lead from the internet, and you don't know them, and they were like, "Don't email me anymore," then obviously, respect that. But if, you know, you know them from church or whatever, and they just didn't want to get the emails, then understand that they're still in your system. They can still technically be a prospect for you. That's just not the avenue that you're going to pursue with them anymore. All right, you have something to add?
Yeah, one important note on that, I've had some people who say like, "Okay, somebody said, 'Please, please remove me from your email list,'" and they'll delete the contact. Don't do that, because if, for example, if they comes from the Young Living Virtual Office, the next time you import your contacts, that person will be added back. And then you'll send them an email again, and then you'll get another email from them saying, "Please remove me from your list. I already told you." So it's important to keep them in your contact manager and just make sure that they're opted out.
Right, right. And that's kind of the important thing to remember about the email marketing side of this or the text marketing side of this, is that it's automated, right? So they can opt in and they automatically receive something. They can also automatically choose to not receive anything, and you don't have to do anything. All right, a couple of questions about replies and the sessions. We do meet here every week at the same time, for now, for the foreseeable future. We'll let you know if that changes. And the recordings are sent out as soon as they are available, which is usually within a couple of hours, unless there's something wonky with the internet or with the recording itself, like happened one time. But, but yeah, we'll be here every week live, and if you are opted in to receive emails from us, then you receive the replay. And also, for now, we do have a, on our YouTube channel, we do have a playlist where we are uploading these, and you can go back and see future topics, or future past topics that we've covered in the series as well. All right, back on it. Let's, oh, we got a couple. See, another question here. Let me get those out of the way, and then we can get back to our contact manager. All right, "Is it possible to have a newsletter on the website?" I thought I saw that mentioned somewhere, and I can't figure out how. I'm also interested in having an option for scheduling from the website, not an event scheduling. That's something we'd love to have too. There are ways that you can use third-party websites for scheduling, so if you use like Calendly or something like that. And you have, I believe, Greg, is it at premium, you have that HTML editing capacity on custom pages? This is a little wonky, like, super advanced right now, just to make sure you guys know that.
Yeah, with Calendly and some other ones, like I think Acuity Scheduling is another popular one. But they give you two ways to add it to your website. One is this embedding HTML thing that you're talking about, and you can do that at premium. The other way is just to put a link on your website, and you can do that at any plan level. You could just have a link that says, "Click here to schedule a time with me for a phone call," and it pops off to the scheduler.
Right, right.
That's not integrated back into GetOiling, but, you know, if they want to schedule a call with you, it's a pretty good, pretty good thing, so.
Yeah, it's an option for now, and it's certainly on our radar in terms of features and things that we would certainly like to build into the platform. But Greg's wizardry is currently occupied with a really exciting feature that we hope to introduce to you guys, you know, within, I don't know, soon.
Yeah, soon. That was hard to say.
Yeah, it is. And then to the rest of your question, Talia, the newsletter, that you have a couple of options for. If you want to have an automated sequence that just drips out over a period of time, that's something that you do under Contacts, Settings, Campaigns, when you go to the Campaigns thing here. So this is how you can actually create something that, and this is evergreen, so this isn't going to be, you know, this week, next week, and so on. You're going to do that a little differently. But if you wanted to say, you know, talk about the oils in the Premium Starter Kit, and you do an email about lemon, an email about lavender, an email about tea tree, and so on, you would do that in here, and then when people opt in every other day or however you have scheduled it, it's going to drip that on them. Now, if you want to do a more traditional newsletter, so maybe like once a month, you write a newsletter, and you're actually doing up-to-the-moment updates and things like that, we're going to do that a little differently. And actually, this leads me to something that I wanted to show you guys, which is basically a hack or a trick to create a sort of newsletter template for yourself. And where we're going to go for that is under Settings, under Contacts. And then we're going to scroll down to Saved Replies. Number of really cool ways you can use this. And one of them is for a monthly or weekly or however frequently newsletter. So what you do is you hit Create, and then you create the first email. Obviously, you want to give it a name, so we'll call this Monthly Newsletter, right? Hey, reading my brain. All right. And so you'll give a subject line here. It's totally okay to edit this in the future. It's actually just going to be a usable template for you. So we'll just call this, maybe we'll call this February Newsletter. And then if you want to have a pretty image up at the top, like a banner or something, I don't think we have anything previously loaded here in this account, but you can load from your computer. You can add whatever pretty stuff you want in here, make it look exactly how you want to. Add all of the information that you want to. There you go. And then you just type underneath it, next to it, however you want to do it. And then you format this out, right, and then you save it. And then, when we go, when we want to write the newsletter, when we want to issue a newsletter, we go over to Manage, we go to Filters, because we want to select the people who have maybe opted in, right? So if you want to send it to everyone, this could be a newsletter for your team. It could be a newsletter for all your prospects, but this is where your tags come into play, right? So if people, let's say that you have a landing page where people are opting in to receive a newsletter. What's the tag associated with that landing page? You use that tag here, right? So the tag, we'll just, we'll use the Moms Group tag here maybe. So we'll have a Moms Group Monthly Newsletter. So we filtered and selected those contacts, and now under Actions, we're going to go to Mail. And then up at the top in the right-hand corner, you see Saved Replies. There's our Monthly Newsletter. And now you can actually go in and you can edit. If it's now March, you change that to March. You change your images around. The formatting is going to stay exactly the same as the first time you did this. And you add the new links maybe, or if, you know, it's a monthly special, you've got, you know, new classes coming up, you link to those, and so on. And then you can send that out to that particular list. Paige says, "This is what I need for my peeps in different countries." Yes, absolutely. This is how you can customize and keep the same format. You don't have to go and build the exact same email to send to five different lists. Use the template, change the details, swap the pictures. However it is that you want to do it, give it a new name, and send it out to the new group of tagged people. Pretty cool, right?
Yep, you can even schedule it. So if you're sending it to people in Europe versus Australia versus US, Canada, you could send it at whatever time actually makes sense for them, like, you know, send it in the morning or the afternoon, or whatever it is they're most likely to be at their computer.
Awesome, yeah. And so, and you can schedule out in advance as well. So let's just say, going on to another example of using this, using this sort of templating, the Saved Replies feature. If you have a welcome email that you like to send off to people when they get started with you. So obviously, it's great to use campaigns to be able to drip concepts, right? If you want to teach something and you want to drip it out over time, or you want to nurture a person toward a particular decision, like getting, you know, getting their Premium Starter Kit or getting onto Essential Awards. A great way to take huge concepts that are foreign to most of our prospects, right? And breaking them down into bite-sized pieces so that they can warm up to the prospect of purchasing over time. Campaigns are great for that. They save you a ton of time, keep you from having to teach people everything. But this feature, Saved Replies, you're going to use this a lot. If you have somebody that's just started and you want to make sure that they have a link to your private Facebook group, that they know where to, you know, if you're serious about building, "Here's my link to share so that they can get their GetOiling system, and here's what you do next." The "Here's what's next" emails, the, you know, "So nice to see you at the event," you're like, event follow-up emails. Save the replies. Save the things that you do frequently as Saved Replies. Use the follow-up plans to remind yourself to send those emails. And this way, you don't have to sit and think, "Oh, what am I going to say? Oh, it's going to take forever." No, all you have to do is, okay, my to-do today is to follow up with the people that were at this event yesterday. So I'm going to tag them all, and I'm going to mail, just like we've pulled this up, how we've gotten to this point right now. We're going to go to Saved Replies, and I'm going to select the first email after live event template that I've saved for myself, where I say, "It was so great to see you at X event yesterday. I wanted to ask you a quick question. What was the, what's your favorite thing that you learned? Hit Reply and let me know." And then send that out to everyone, and obviously personalize it, which if you guys don't know how to do this, up there by Saved Replies, to the left of it, there's a little box. So if you want to personalize, and for every person that you send this to, you want to say, "Hey, Joe. Hey, Sally. Hey, Suzie. Great to see you at the event yesterday." You don't have to send out eight different emails for eight people. You can just put their name in here. So, "Hey," first name, "Welcome to my newsletter," right? Or, "Hey," first name, "Great to see you yesterday. Quick question. What was your favorite thing that you learned?" Yeah, so that's another way you can use that super valuable feature.
That works with both emailing and texting too, so you can personalize texts too, which, I mean, texts are great for getting people's attention, but then putting their name in there too. Makes it seem like you put that extra effort into it. Meanwhile, you might be texting 100 people, but it takes only, you know, five seconds to do that, so.
And think about this, right? So for those of you who have been through the 90-day challenge in Week 2, I teach you how to create a video presentation funnel where you are basically doing, you know, sort of a combo of Essential Oils 101 and a Young Living Business Presentation, because you need to have a tool like that that's comprehensive, where somebody's like, "Look, I want to know about what you do. I'm, you know, feeling some type of way about my life. I need a change." And you say, "Okay, I've got just the thing for you." And so when you speak to that person, and there will be many, and if there aren't yet, then expect there to be, and be prepared to do the same thing in each instance, right? You're, all successful businesses, all businesses that last, that stand the test of time, have systems for every process that they embark on in their business. The way that you invite someone should be the same every time. The way that you follow up with someone should be the same every time, and you should follow those same steps. And you can help keep yourself in line with the system. It can support you, so you don't even have to think about it. You don't have to think about, "Okay, I have to remind myself to call her tomorrow, and then make sure she also gets this email and watches this video." You can set the system up to do that for you, so you don't have to think about it. Where was I going with that? It's been a long week already, you guys. So, yeah, you can, you can create those, those follow-up plans and connect them to your Saved Replies, and it's just a matter of bloop, bloop, done, hit Send, and you're off to the races. And you should use this for post-events. You should use this for new people. You should use this for reactivations, you know, to get people who have purchased before, who are maybe who've fallen off, have a plan, and start building these out. And they're really, really simple, really, really simple to do. All right, let's see.
Cynthia asked about your 90-day, what was the 90-day challenge? So I don't know if you want to describe that. It's under the Help button. But we did 90 days. I think it's 13 videos over the course of, no, I think it was actually more than 90 days, where we went through the foundations of building a network marketing business in Young Living and, you know, using GetOiling basically to its full capacity, you know, in a lot of ways. There's a lot of useful information in there.
Yeah, it's very, it's very comprehensive. There's some very deep dives. What we do, and if you are at basic or higher at the membership level, you have access to all of those videos inside the Help section. There's videos in the Help section for everyone, but that's more of a, we're using the full extent and showing the full extent of our features and what they can do for you, and teaching you how to use them in context in that series. So it's available to you if you're, you know, if you have access to those features, basically. So in the second week of that, I actually taught you guys how to, how to create that video presentation. And I think this is actually where I was going at earlier. So this is not coffee, and I think it might need to be. So what I was getting at is if you are going to share with people that video presentation that you create, and if you want, go back and watch Week 2 of the 90-day challenge, and you'll even learn how to do an effective presentation, what the, because you need to be the one presenting. Obviously, you can for a while point to your leaders' presentations, but at some point, you've got to lead, right? If you've got big goals, you got to get to where you want to be. You've got to be the one in the front of the room. So you have that, and you've got your link to the funnel that I taught you how to create in that video. Then you have, you can have a Saved Reply for someone who needs to see that video. So you give them specific instructions. "Hey, contact first name, so glad you're interested in learning more. Here's the link to the video." Or here's, you know, click here into your name and email. Or here's, you know, "Click here into your name and email and, you know, and then you'll receive a 14-minute video. Look forward to speaking with you at 5 o'clock today." Or whatever. And you do a Saved Reply for that. And so for every person, you go in and you just tweak it a little bit. And it's got the link already there. You don't have to worry about, okay, well, what was my link to share? It's all already there. And so you're basically sharing the same resource over and over again. Obviously, you have the customization features that are built into the system, like this Contact First Name Tag. But then you can just go in before you hit Send and change the details. And then in your follow-up plan, you could have a, you know, so send the, you know, so the first step in the follow-up plan can be to send the video funnel link. Okay, so that's what we're accomplishing here. And then the next day, it is follow-up. And so there could be a follow-up email or it could just be that you're doing a call. You guys get where I'm going with that. There's a lot that you can build in to make yourself more productive and to never drop the ball with a prospect if you use these features correctly. All right, let me see. Funny, I get excited. Yeah, I nerd out over marketing, you guys. All right, um, let me see. Yeah, so the 90-day challenge, if you go to Help, under Help and scroll down, you'll find the videos there. And Help, I guess Greg will show you right here. There you go, you click Help. And you'll see there's actually lots of really great info here that Greg put together, it's reference guides and quick videos on different aspects of the system. They're all pretty quick to go through and learn. 90-day Challenge webinars are a deep dive if you want to go, you know, and this, this actually, what we're showing you right here, this is cumulative in terms of the information. You're starting with one thing and we're building. So definitely start at the beginning there. But if you want to go back for quick reference, there is a sort of reference there. What, if you scroll down just a little bit. The, yeah, the table of contents there. So if you wanted to, okay, well, what week did we cover this or that? Like, you can see that in there as well. Awesome. All right, so, yeah, I think we've basically covered all of the concepts and explanation that I had really, you know, planned. If you can, anything you'd like to add, Greg? Or also, just as an invitation, a hot seat invitation. If somebody would like to come out and join us live, we have a few minutes. We can chat with you and answer any questions that you might have directly. You can show your face or we can just hear your voice. But yeah, if you are interested in that, maybe raise your hand and then leave a comment and let us know what question you would like to have addressed. And we'd be happy to walk you through even in your own system, you know, barring any exposure to sensitive information of your contacts. We might not be able to delve into your contact manager with you live on screen. But you're welcome to do that if we have a volunteer. Definitely do raise your hand. I know Amelia came out and joined us last week and she had some big light bulbs going off there. And we would love to do that for any of you guys. That is something that we want to make sure we keep open every week. If you want to come out and join us, there's going to be an opportunity to do that every week. All right, is there anything that comes to mind for you, Greg? Anything in addition to what we've covered today, just in terms of, you know, getting, just being more efficient, saving more time and?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of quick things, I guess. Actually, we have a question from Paige here. Can you show us how to attach tags to campaigns? Tags to campaigns, I don't think there is a tag, you know, there's no, you can't link the two. You can attach tags to contacts. I should say, well, this accountant, I don't think has the two-way texting turned on. But when you're editing a campaign, let me come in here and actually edit the details of it. If you have two-way texting, there is a way to add a text and keyword, which puts them on that campaign. I don't know if that's kind of where you were going, but. And the other thing I was going to say, the tip that came to mind is you see this little sort of like graph-looking thing on every one of these contacts? You can rate people from 0 to 5. And what it'll do is if you haven't sent them anything or done anything on their record in their, on their account within whatever timeframe you're seeing here, like three days, weekly, monthly, quarterly, annually or never, it will remind you. So like if I rate reminder every three days, put this one up here and then go over to back to my dashboard. Actually, you're probably not going to be on there because we were just doing stuff with your account today. But this one here, this, another contact shows, it must have been more than three days since we did that. But that's, that's a nice way of like automatically surfacing people. So like if you've got hot leads or whatever that you want to follow up with on a regular basis, that rating is a super simple way to have that surface. That also shows up in your daily activity email, so you can do that as well. And you can snooze here. There's like a little snooze button. If you're like, well, I'm going to hold off here till the next time. And you can push that button and it'll just sort of snooze it. Or you can just drop them a quick email.
Okay, cool. Okay, so we have, so Paige, I think when, okay, so here's a scenario, she says. "I upload new contacts with 10 new members and I'd like to attach a tag or something that will automatically send a welcome letter or a campaign."
Got it, okay.
Yeah, so you would have a campaign and the campaign's got a name. And then you're going to select the 10 that you want to use. And then you go to Actions and you're going to go to that field right there for Campaign Follow-Up Planner Tags. And there, you select the campaign you want to put them on. You can add the tag that you want as well, if it's a pre-existing tag or one that you would like to even create. Select Multiple. There you go. You got it. Fantastic. All right.
You can pick more than one. You can do all three. I mean, you could do a Campaign Follow-Up Plan and Tags all at the same time, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, if they're all related and the follow-up is going to be the same, absolutely, yes. And then you've got, you know, you log in or you get the daily email. Here's the things you have to do today. How cool is that? All right, that's truly, that's being your own boss. So you're telling yourself what to do. Telling you what to do to be successful. And that's, I mean, honestly, you guys, that's the hardest thing about being in a business for yourself is making sure that you're doing enough of the right things every day to keep yourself in business, to keep this being something viable and something that can grow in viability into the future. So that's why these, these are such important features to use. All right, so Val asks, "What is the best video presentation? YouTube, Vimeo, or can you do one right in the platform and record it?" In terms of best, it really just depends on your budget and your personal preference. In terms of where you host the video, that can be on YouTube, that could be on Vimeo, it could be on Wistia, it could be wherever you would like to actually host the video. Because you're really just pasting an embed code or a link inside of GetOiling when you're using a video. However, to answer the second part of your question, if you can record it from right in the system, the answer is yes. And the way that you do that is, is you go actually over to Zoom Meetings and then you pretend like you're giving a class. Or, you know, you either do a Talking Head video where it's just, you know, your webcam showing your face or you use a keynote or PowerPoint presentation and you narrate slides, recording your screen. And then that file is going to download if you've recorded it after you're done. And then you take that file that's now on your local computer and then you upload it to Vimeo or Wistia or wherever you like to use. We use Vimeo, but I do show in the, I believe it's Week 2 of the 90-day challenge, how you can quickly go into YouTube and create for free and, you know, and upload to your channel that video that you can then plug into the GetOiling system. "All right, many of my contacts are through Facebook Messenger. Is there a way to use that system without having to copy and paste? They aren't ready to give contact info yet." So with Facebook, Lisa. Okay, it was the best way to say this. I used Facebook when I first started building a network marketing years ago exclusively. I didn't have a budget for a system like this and actually, a system like this didn't exist. And that's, that's why this excites me so much because there's so much available to you guys that wasn't available to me when I started my career in this business. And, yeah, so the goal with Facebook Messenger or just contacts on Facebook in general, is to get them off of Facebook as quickly as possible. Get them off of Facebook and onto the phone. Get them off of Facebook and onto an event. And the way that you get them to do that is to give them a reason why, right? So you have a reason why, but it's not the same as theirs. So you need to have something that is compelling enough for them to want to take that time out of their day, get on the phone with you or exchange email with you. So if you go back to our funnel training or really a lot of the trainings in our 90-day challenge that we've talked about, we talk about things like Lead magnets, things that are interesting and relevant to people. And people understand at this day and age, because this is not a new concept, that when you're getting something for free from a professional entity, in many cases, majority of the time, they're going to be asking you for something and it's just your name and email. It's permission to send you stuff. And, you know, with the ability to opt out of that at any time. So I would ask questions, get people engaged and find a reason that's compelling enough for them to get on the phone with you as quickly as possible. My strategy is always Facebook Messenger to phone. And then from phone, I could say, talk them up to the point where they're very curious about a presentation that I have and then I tell them where to go to get onto it. And I'm saying, "Into your name and email here and the video is on the next page," right? So you've got to be bold about that. People are being weird about sharing their contact info. They're on Facebook. I mean, that's, if you're concerned about your privacy, Facebook is not where you want to hang out. So just bust that logic up a little bit and be bold. Get them onto the phone, get them off of Facebook. All right, here we go. "I do Facebook Live so far, but that is all. Didn't know I could record that." Yep, you sure can. Awesome. Glad you agree with that, Lisa. And you know another thing that you can do? When, when you want somebody to opt in, let them know that they're going to receive something exclusive and valuable from you, you know? So like that newsletter that we've just talked about, that now you know you can create really easily and not reinvent the wheel every week. Or not, I wouldn't say do it every week, do it every month, you know? So Young Living releases, it's promos and you know when they do. It's always at a certain time of the month, right? And so then you go in, once you have that information and have the images and all of that kind of stuff, then you say, you know, "I've got an exclusive newsletter that I send out once a month with recipes and discounts and, you know, however you want to hype up your value." And you say, "I'm not going to send you anything other than that valuable stuff. Not going to bug you. You can opt out at any time." By the way, do you use oils? Let me help you get started, right? Cool, all right. Great, great call today, you guys. Last call for questions and also, oh, how about this? What would you like to learn next week? Is there a concept that, you know, feels a little too big for you, that you don't quite understand? Is there something about the system that you want to learn more about that we can delve into a little deeper next week? Leave us a, leave us a question or a message. Send us an email to info@getoiling.com or ashley@getoiling.com if you want to ask me a marketing question and, yeah, we'll add it on.
Yeah, we know all the good ideas, at least for me, happen about two seconds after you get off the phone. So, yeah, you can send us an email anytime.
Absolutely. You always get that, that light bulb that goes off. All right, the texting feature, actually Jesse, the very first, the very first live work session that we did, we talked about that in pretty hot detail. And so if you go to, and actually, the email that I send out with our replay today is going to point to our playlist on YouTube. But if you know where to find it already, which it looks like you do, just watch Week 1. We do go into texting there. It's a little all over the place just because we're getting started and we took a lot of questions. But the bulk of what we really dove into was how to use the texting feature, both in a one-off, like chatting with one person setting, as well as from a campaign perspective. So if you wanted to send like a text-based EO 101 class or something, you could do that. There we go. And Greg just dropped the link here for those of you on here live. Texting Val is actually using a phone number that you personally select. And if you watch the very first kickoff call for this live work session on our YouTube channel, you'll find that there. And then I believe that there are two-way texting tutorials and also we covered that in some of the 90-day challenge as well. If you want to look through the Help section, that's in there too. Awesome. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you really, Jesse, you don't need, you don't really need anything else. And that's, that's kind of the beauty of using the system. You have it all under one roof. And, you know, so if you've got a prospect under one thing, you know, one service and then another, like how do you know if they did this and then that? No, everything is in one place here. It all talks to each other. She's so excited. I love it. All right, cool, cool, cool. All right, well, we will see you guys next week. Don't forget, send us that email. You can always send me an email as well if you want more specific marketing context. Ashley@getoiling.com, if you have specific requests for training, you can send that to me or to info@getoiling.com and we will see you on the next training. Oh, Val, the, how do I address this quickly?
I think, I mean, depending on your phone, there are ways of exporting your contacts to a CSV file and then you can put them into GetOiling. So I think that's the answer to your question there. If you, you can shoot me an email, whatever. I can probably get you a link on how to do that, depending on whether it's iOS or Android, so.
Awesome. Okay, we'll see you guys next week.
Thanks, everyone. Talk to you later.